I would like to call to order the Tuesday, December 2nd meeting of the Monmouth City Council and ask Phyllis to call the roll, please.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Guthrie.
Here.
Counselor Coons.
Here.
Counselor Milligan.
Here.
Counselor Shaffer.
I'm here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes. All rise for the flag, please.
I am quite delighted to testify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The first item tonight is the consent calendar, which consists of minutes from the council meeting and work session of November 18th. If I could have a motion to approve those two sets of minutes.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, we have two sets of minutes approved. One of my favorite things about this last meeting of the year each year is an opportunity to recognize employees who have been with the city for nice round numbers of years, multiples of five. So, we have four of those tonight. We've had bigger crowds some years, but this is four this year. So... Should I just put that mic in the general direction just to make sure it feels...
It shouldn't be a problem.
No. Well, this is for the sake of... So, I would like to have each victim, I mean employee, come up and stand here with me as I embarrass you publicly by reading the narrative I have about you. So, the first one tonight is Officer Kevin Renfro, who has been with us for five years. So, Kevin began working full-time for the Monmouth Police Department in June of 2009. He had just graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Western Oregon. And although he is primarily a patrol officer, he's either taken it upon himself or because of his skills been assigned to conduct numerous criminal follow-up investigations. And with his skills and determination and attention to detail, he's identified several suspects and solved cases, many of those resulting in arrests. One of his extra assignments within the department includes serving as the field training officer. Because of his recognized abilities and professionalism, he's relied upon heavily to help train all of the new officers and reserve officers. Kevin is a leader and a good example for new officers to follow. He's developed a positive relationship with community members over the past five years and is always a great representative of the police department. He is well-respected by his fellow officers, which was very evident last year when they all voted and selected him as the Monmouth Police Officer of the Year. The city of Monmouth and its citizens are very fortunate to have Kevin serving as a member of the police department, and we look forward to many more years of him proudly serving this community. Thanks for your service. Next up is Chris Oberst, the library director. So, Chris has been with us for 10 years. She began as the library's youth services librarian in August of 2004. During her tenure as the children's librarian, she increased youth attendance at children's library programs. She increased the collection of juvenile and young adult materials, and my kids really noticed that. Did her best to help make the library a fun and inviting place for kids and families. On July 1st of 2013, Chris was promoted to library director and continues in her quest to help make the library a fun and inviting place for everyone. She's increased library services by providing programming for adults, including crafts, culture, and education. The library is a richer and more active part of our community because Chris is there, and it's a real pleasure to have you attend. Larry Thornton, our building official. Larry has been here for 15 years. Larry was originally hired on October 1st, 1999 despite the fact that he was not certified as a building official. Now, I don't get that. 10 weeks later, he was certified as a building official, and he's been our building official ever since. He immediately saw a need for the city to have both the housing code and an abatement of dangerous building codes, and in 2000, we adopted those codes. So, Larry saw a real need in the community and pushed hard to get that through. He initiated the use of building permitting software in 2001, and the electronic storage makes referring to old permits much easier for you, I'm sure. In 2007, he applied his hard-earned experience around substandard housing in town. He kept having to deal with that, and he rewrote that housing and dangerous building codes, making enforcement a whole lot easier. He's been instrumental in the construction of a series of large projects at Western. Monmouth is not a typical small town when it comes to building inspection. Larry oversaw the construction of the Hammersley Library, Ackerman Hall, the Health and Wellness Center, and the Devolde Science Center in recent years. In 2013, he extended himself to earn certification as an electrical inspector. This certification isn't easy for a non-electrician to achieve, but Larry applied himself to the task and got it done. He's currently hard at work on new permitting software, our new police station, and he's preparing to work with Western on a planned new education building. So, Larry, thanks. Keep up the good work. And finally, Sue Teal, the director of Senior Center. Sue has been with us for 25 years. Sue has spent the past 25 years working to enrich lives of older adults in our community. A senior's age, they need a large variety of classes, events, travel, and support to keep their good health and be in good shape. This is very important to Sue. She spent many hours to form a working relationship with Western Oregon University to provide support of the practicum program to show future older adult workers how rewarding it is to work with this age group. She also works with Northwest Senior and Disability Services, Shemecka Community College, AARP, the Oregon State County Extension, and others to provide classes and special events to keep seniors' minds and bodies active. Sue was able to do something this year that had been a dream of hers for the past 25 years. On Veterans Day this year, she was able to bring honor to the veterans of this great nation and show them how much we appreciate what they've done. Sue loves her job and wants to make a difference in seniors' lives. She wants every person coming through the door to know they're still somebody that matters, and it matters that they're there. And Sue's loving and caring demeanor ensures that that's always the case. Thanks, Sue. Appreciate the service. And with that, I will turn to reports. My mayor's report is very short. The saga of the WIMPAC server continues, I believe, Scott. We're very close to finally having that issue settled, as far as you can tell, and we'll hear maybe a little bit more about that work session if you can give us a brief fill-in. I appreciate that. And then, we had originally scheduled a meeting of the Warren Street project team until Mr. Manager McClure came down with a bug. So, our consultant, Mr. Baller, and Counselor Carey and I had a conversation over pizza and tried to move that project forward, and if you're curious about that, please contact me. And that's all I have. So, I will turn to reports from council representatives, the boards, and commissions, and ask Counselor Silvernagle, what's up at the senior board?
Senior Center Board, yeah. So, the advisory board did not meet in November, but we're scheduled to meet next, December 16th. And I would remind folks that there's a breakfast this coming Saturday, the December 6th, from 8:30 to 10:30, a community breakfast, $6 adults and $3 for under 12. That's about it, I think.
And what were the, what's the hours on that breakfast?
8:30 to 10:30.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Milligan.
Mayor. I do have a report this time.
So, no hearings this time?
No hearings. Although there wasn't much business that took place, there were no items of concern on the agenda, but the city manager McClure has been meeting with different boards and commissions and introducing them to the urban renewal district projects, and they had quite an interesting conversation as they saw different projects that some of them were completely unaware of and some other ideas that were brought forward.
Good.
It was a good conversation, and that was pretty much the whole meeting.
Good. Be interested to hear that when you're done making rounds on that. Counselor Carey.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, arts and culture continues to struggle with forum issues, and we're trying to determine whether we can get a December date, and I'm not sure.
We do have a December.
That's the 10th?
Yeah.
December 10th is when we'll be meeting, and so that's a positive deal, and we're hoping to continue to grow that membership. We've got a new member on there, so we'll hopefully have that person doing well. I'll move right on to MyNet, if that's okay.
Please do.
And again, my report on MyNet is a general one at the moment. Financial condition of the enterprise is continuing to improve, which is good. The number of accounts are up. We lost fewer over the summer, so there's room for, a reason for feeling good about the direction that that organization is going. We are in the evaluation phase for Don Paton, our general manager, and that is, hopefully we're going to get that done tomorrow. And, you know, it's hard for everybody to see that evaluation process right now, so hopefully we'll get that done tomorrow. But again, positive direction, I think.
Mayor Oberst. There's a traffic safety commission meeting last night.
Oh, cool.
Do I give a report?
Yeah, please do.
So, the traffic safety commission is going to be meeting with us during work session this evening as well, but just for the benefit of the folks in the room now, there were two primary issues addressed. The first was the safety issues of crossing 99 at Madrona Street, so this is over there by Derek Queen and KFC. Russ did his damnedest to get in with ODOT and see if we can't put a flashing light or something in there, and at the end of the day, they're concerned about obstructing the actual traffic control device at the corner of Main 99. So, for right now, that's a no-go, but long-term master plan, you know, maybe something down closer to Buy Mart if that ever punches through. But for right now, people are encouraged to use the crosswalk, stay within the white lines, obey all traffic rules. And then, lastly, the traffic fine increase signs will be going up in the school zones. Just a gentle reminder to folks that as they're going through the school zones on Highway 51 and 99, to make sure that they're watching their speed, otherwise it gets expensive pretty quickly.
Thank you.
That means, when does that board meet?
Oh, once every three months. The next one is March.
Okay.
So, you'll hear again from me then? Try to contain your excitement.
Okay. Any community?
YMCA Christmas party.
Yeah, so that would be one. What was that again? I don't know. We want to make sure that gets on for people here.
Right, so YMCA Christmas party is Friday, December 12th at 6:00 PM, so if you're interested, call the YMCA office and they'll get you set up with tickets for it.
And it is being offered at the?
At Green Villa Barn.
And what goes on? Is there an auction? Is there?
Sure. There'll be both a silent and an oral auction, and...
Food.
First word, yeah, food.
Good.
I have to say the food, but I think will be good. Who's cooking in this case? So, yeah, no, it's always good, actually. And so, it's great event, basically a fundraiser as well as a friend raiser for the YMCA.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, the Salvation Army is going to begin the bell ringing, and the Lions Club will be ringing the bell on December 6th. That's this next Saturday at Buy Mart and at Roth's, so I would encourage any of you shopping, either of those places to consider dropping something into the red till. Should you be at Buy Mart between 10 and noon, I'm going to shake you down pretty hard, just so you know. It's out.
And if you want to volunteer to ring the bell, who do you contact?
You know, directly with Salvation Army. We've got a date that the Lions Club, but they would appreciate...
And I would like to remind everyone that this Friday, we will have one of the largest holiday trees in North America illuminated in our fair city, up on campus at Western. There are activities in our downtown core during the day, and at about 6 o'clock, the parade will depart from Chris's library parking lot and run up through downtown and through campus, and when the parade has passed by, we will have a brief ceremony and eliminate the tree, and then there's usually fun activities in Warner University Center as well. So, if you're looking for something for Friday, that's a really good event. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Any others? Mark. Yes, thank you. Meeting Development Director, Mark Fancy.
I'm here tonight in my capacity as the president of the Smith Fine Arts Series Board, and I wanted to remind everyone that the evening after the tree lighting, Louisiana New Orleans legend, Alan Toussaint, will be here to play with the Western Hemisphere Orchestra. This will be his second time here to Monmouth, and he loved it so much two years ago that actually his representatives reached out to the series to come back.
So, is that Friday or Saturday?
That's Saturday night at 7:30.
I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and I wanted to mention that there are, that's one of six performances that we have for the series up through April of next year. That includes not only Alan Toussaint, but we have a couple of shows in January. The Rainbow Dance Theater, our own local group, will be presenting a new presentation, I understand. The Turtle Island String Quartet, which are Grammy winners, they're going to be doing their interpretation of Miles Davis' classic album, Birth of the Cool. The April Virch Band, she's a Canadian step dancer and fiddler, and she will play two nights in February. The show I'm looking forward to the most, Dr. Lonnie Smith, who is the master of the Hammond VIII organ. And if you don't know what a Hammond VIII organ, it sounds like you probably do, actually. It's a sound unto itself. And then, the series concludes in April with Jose James with the American Metropolitan Orchestra. He's one of the hottest new singer-songwriters out and about. So, I wanted to let everybody know that you've got world-quality entertainment coming here to Monmouth. There are still six performances left, and there are season ticket packages where you can either purchase six performances or you can get five performances, and the price range for those is less than $25. And as a veteran concert goer, I know that that's a great bargain for your money, and it's just down the street. There's also a veteran concert goer who's run up and down this valley at all hours of the evening, coming back from shows. And I also wanted to mention that one of the important parts of this is the student outreach that goes on, and that takes various forms. Sometimes it's inviting high school students in to hear a performance or a rehearsal before the actual performance. One of the neatest ones I heard about last year was when the Orchestra Kremlin was here, they actually performed compositions that were written by Wu music students. So, that was a lot of fun. So, anyway, thank you, and I want to let people know that there are season tickets available, and there are still some tickets left for Saturday night's show that may be sold out eventually.
7:30, you said?
7:30 start time on all those shows, yeah.
Very good. Any other? I see we have a group of young people here tonight, Western students?
You get free tickets to the Smith Fine Arts Series, by the way, in case you didn't know that.
Yes, you do.
That you need to go to the box office and get your tickets, because when you get to be our age, it gets more expensive.
Not too expensive.
Not too expensive, but just more.
Still affordable.
A nominal charge.
That's right.
We do have the advantage of having this fine art series that makes it affordable in our community. Before you see these acts in, say, Portland, it might not be quite so. So, you all, here's another idea. If you are interested in serving on, I don't know, the Arts and Culture Commission, we have an opening. If you want to get involved in your community, think about that. You can come to City Hall, get the forum, talk to Phyllis, so, you know, yeah, you can download it. We, thank you, we are, yeah, I forgot, you know, we have that actually moved into the 20th century. So, this is an opportunity to get involved in your community while you're a student here, you know? It's really good stuff. So, appreciate you all being here. Thanks for coming. Any others? Okay, with that, I will turn to the business agenda. And the first item, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped Scott. I skipped Scott. How dare I? Thank you.
Couple of things, Police Station making nice progress. A couple of things, they've been doing a lot of seismic work, all the strapping up in the attic, you know, equipment tying down, everything. Doing a lot of the cutting for the plumbing, you know, cutting in new sections, electrical, getting that, and they're doing framing kind of by section as they work on these phases, so it's making some nice work. One I want to call specifically, you know, we've had some cost issues with the project we've been working with that. The lighting, we actually had Power and Light really take a lead on that issue with the lighting system. We're actually accessing Bono Power money, energy efficiency money for that. And so, that was a big jump from dropping down that cost, and...
So, LED?
Yeah, it'll be, you know, it'll be good.
Good.
Really good system. And I think what we also want to emphasize hopefully with this, one thing is that we can do this type of work for any business, and we can go into any business in town and help them change out their lights, you know, work with HVAC, other things. We've had some activity, but I think sometimes people think energy conservation, they own their home. And so, hopefully this isn't another case where we can actually walk somebody and someone's like, well, what would that look like? Well, just you can walk into the building, we'll show you what it looks like, and we can tell you how it works. So, hopefully, it's not just a benefit to the Police Station, but another way to advertise how well we work out in the community.
Good.
One further note on that, it's interesting with, most utilities in our region, kind of Bono customers, use just the Bono money for energy conservation. We're one of the few ones that actually throws in our own utility money. When Chuck Thurman, Power and Light Superintendent, is at meetings and mentions that, people kind of look at him funny, like, really, you guys put in extra money? It's like, yeah, we do. Thanks. So, we're definitely a leader in energy conservation.
Did you go?
Nope.
Good. Okay, now I'll turn the page and go to the business agenda and start with Phyllis. I'm sorry. Citizen comments. I'm just in a hurry tonight. I'm sorry. Any citizen comments tonight? Nobody gets to say the mayor's lame is hurrying through the agenda.
We all say that.
Yeah, you gotta say that up here.
That's right.
Now?
No.
Thank you. Business agenda. And I'm just so excited to get to this item. Phyllis, the canvas of votes, please.
Mayor and council, an election was held on November 4th, 2014. The ballot contained candidates for mayor and three council positions. The city charter requires that I read the canvas into the record, so the vote canvas is as follows. Mayor, city of Monmouth, John Oberst, 1,856 votes. Re-elected as mayor for two years. City councils, councillor, city of Monmouth, John Carey, 1,458 votes. Marshall J. Guthrie, 1,212 votes. Royal Johnson, 1,004 votes. Jerry Blankenheim, 886 votes. The top three are elected to four-year terms. That would be John Carey, Marshall Guthrie, and Royal Johnson.
Thank you. And congratulations to those three council candidates. I would like to real quickly put out, and I neglected to get this out to the council, but Jerry Blankenheim has applied for a position on the budget committee. So, if we can take that up next time, or if you all are comfortable, we can go ahead and make that decision tonight. If you don't feel a need to see the application, you're called.
I'd like to see that.
Okay, very good. No, that's great. That's great. I just was, yeah, okay.
I'd just like to comment, since we've got such a full room tonight, that when it comes to elections, we've had several very close elections. I think that there's one amendment that's still ongoing. It really does, this was a year that truly highlighted locally how many important issues are decided by just a handful of votes, and so, please spread the word. In two more years, when we do this thing again, make sure that everybody gets out there and votes. And I would also like to see, I'm not going to be up for reelection in two years, so I'd be happy to try to lead this initiative. I would love for a local forum for candidates to be able to discuss the issues at hand. It seems like there's so many good ideas out there and so many important issues to discuss, and we're limited to what we can fit in the local newspaper. We're limited to what people put on Facebook or on webpages. I think it's important to have a public event in future elections, and so I will be volunteering my energy to do that in two years.
And there used to be a forum like that, you know, most elections anyway, and they just, I'm not sure, there was the energy behind that.
I'll let you know that the Chamber of Commerce here in town had planned to have something this fall for any local candidates that wanted to be invited, and the date that they had selected for that, and there was another group holding a candidates forum at the Green Villa Barn that same week, and so candidates were kind of like, well, can't do both, and that one had been pre-planned. So, I think there are some sometimes that aren't well-advertised, but the chamber would be glad to talk to you about how to move that forward, because that's a commitment from the chamber board.
Great. I just, I know we do good work here. It may not seem like it every single week, every single meeting, but there's, it's so amazing how much of our daily lives are impacted at the city level or at the county level, and it gets lost in the national election. I think we could be doing more as public representatives to kind of highlight that.
Very good. Thanks, Marshall. Anything else? Okay, with that, let me turn to Sergeant Olson. We have a liquor license application for our upcoming new restaurant, Momiji.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Like you said, I'm Sergeant Olson of Monmouth Police Department. I'm here to go over the liquor license for Momiji in Monmouth. That'll be located at 183 Main Street West. They've applied for liquor license. The application is limited on-premise sales. The business will focus on selling sushi, teriyaki rice, bowls, and noodles, but wishes to offer beer and wine along with food. The owner and his family currently own four other Momiji restaurants in North Salem, Lincoln City, North Bend, and Lebanon. And with that, I've done a background investigation on them. Anybody that applies for one here in the city of Monmouth has to go through a background investigation, and I did not find anything disqualifying for this applicant. As you know, that building used to be West Coast Pizza, which has been closed for several months, so they're right now doing some remodeling inside. I think they're looking at maybe January to open. I'm not too sure. So, with that said, with the background investigation done, I'd like to make a recommendation, or the city would like to make a recommendation, to approve the liquor license for Momiji.
Any questions for Sergeant Olson, council?
So, you stated beer and wine specifically, but would this liquor license also enable them to sell hard alcohol?
No, I believe the limited on-premise to, you know, be a full on-premise is...
Right. So, it's just bare minimum.
Okay. If they wanted to sell hard liquor, they'd have to go through the process to get the full license.
Got it.
I move to send the ULCC a recommendation to approve the liquor license for Momiji.
Second.
I'll second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, send it on. Thanks. Appreciate it. We can, with, well, we can now turn to a resolution approving and accepting the dedication of right-of-way. Mark, if you could give us a little background on this and...
Sure. This is a property, if you look at the very last page of your resolution, there's a map there, exhibit D of your resolution. This would dedicate property identified as an assessor map, 8430 DB, tax lot 201 as public right-of-way. The city currently holds feet title to this tax lot, and what this would do would be to actually dedicate this as right-of-way. The property includes a developed portion of Echo Street South, including a grassy area behind the curb for underground utilities. We've got utilities located there. This was the property a couple of months ago. We thought we were going to sell some of this off, in terms of the utilities located in the area that we were talking about. So, this is part of that bigger problem, I think I brought to you previously, that we, there's some portions of Echo Street where we own feet titled tax lots, and we want to make public right-of-way where our streets are. So, we're dedicating the land and divest the ownership of it.
Okay, so this becomes one of those mysterious pieces of planet Earth that nobody owns because it's called right-of-way.
Yeah, that's the nature of right-of-way. You bet.
And this enables the property owner on 200 to access Echo Street.
Right, without some kind of an easement. Right, right. And they've just recently been approved for a partition, so...
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions, council beyond that? So, this would be Resolution 1785.
I move the council adopt Resolution Number 1785, approving and accepting the dedication of certain real property lying within Echo Street for public use.
Second. Moved and seconded. If I could have a roll call, please, Phil.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Coons.
Aye.
Counselor Shaffer.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie. Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
And that's a unanimous move in that direction. Thank you very much. And the last item on the business agenda tonight is an ordinance adopting legislative amendment 1401, a second reading. And Mark, if you could give us some background again?
Sure, this is an amendment that includes, this includes amendments to the zoning and development ordinance, the transportation system plan, and the sign code. You had voted on November 4th to adopt this at the close of your public hearing. You conducted the first reading, it's your last meeting on November 18th.
Okay. So this is a wide-ranging group of amendments, covering all kinds of different little pieces. Council, any questions? Do you mark on any of this?
I have a couple. Just because it is fairly far-reaching, and we don't always have the, you know, the adjacent sort of ordinance ordinances, could you highlight the ones? I mean, as I've read, it market appears that there are many, they're just bookkeeping, clean-up sort of thing. Others are more substantive. Could you highlight some of the significant ones, the substantive ones that?
Sure, if you've got the set of amendments there, I think probably the density exceptions on page three for planned unit developments, that allows for providing some additional density when certain sustainable development practices are used on-site. These would be as determined by the planning commission, whether or not there's enough of those amenities provided to the hoop, granting some additional density. The code currently doesn't have a minimum percentage of open space that's to be provided within PUDs, and the section at the bottom of page four extending over to page five would provide for that, and also make sure that there is some usable open space within PUDs. Sometimes there have been occasions in other places where sometimes the worst ground on the site is what gets made as open space, and it's really unusable at times. I think if you look at page five, we had talked about eliminating home occupations within the Main Street District, because we want to encourage businesses to not be restricted to, you know, home employees only, you know, home-based business. Some of the other changes to the permitted uses were to recognize the uses we've got now, like Main Street Park, the library, the senior center, to allow for uses for entertainment purposes, such as galleries and museums that are pretty low-impact. And if you look over to page seven of the amendments, to note that if there was some type of a facility or theater with a seating capacity greater than 300, that would trigger a conditional use permit. That's about half the size of Rice Auditorium. So there you're starting to get some impacts that you can address with a conditional use We had the whole, if you look on the bottom of page eight, the top of page nine, under minor variances, now, this is all related to the discussion we had on right-of-way issues, we allow variances for that. You know, as stated, we made the corrections to the right-of-way tables on 11 and 12, the street cross-sections for clarification purposes. We have added the allowance for wind sales signs on Highway 99. I'm all the way now on page 15 of the amendments, there's a number of standards that are for placement of sale signs, and at the same time prohibited inflatable advertising devices. That was an addition that came with that. Can I help?
That does, I, as I read these, and I sort of targeted those same ones as you had, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
I think you've done a nice job, frankly, of making it more understandable, making it easier. And we streamlined some things, it appears. So, you know, I think that would be helpful. The one section that was fairly significant was the density in the PUDs, and admittedly, this is something that's, you know, you're allowing for exceptions here. Did we have any conversation with the developer of the PUD in our, you know, in-town Edward's Edition, or suggestions on things that might, should be included, or might be impactful?
I didn't. I found this language in some other codes, in some other places. I think what the, I mean, the density exceptions, you know, they allow one extra unit per acre in the low-density zone, I think it was two extra units per acre in the medium-density zone. So they are huge changes, but again, they are tied to providing those sustainable features.
Yeah, I saw those, and, yeah, I didn't know how, I mean, it's fine. I think anytime we can push out reasons for exceptions is good, I just, you know, there might be, those that are on the ground might have a, you know, might say, well, we need a D2 here to clean some of this other stuff up. And some of these sustainability things might be applicable here and not applicable elsewhere.
And I would say too, there were two public hearings on this, so anybody that had an interest in it could have certainly had two opportunities to come in and address those.
Yeah.
And the planning commission, we haven't heard anybody here from the City Council or any of ours.
And I don't know if you still, if you have your staff report for when we had the public hearing included in that, staff memo, a table showing, you know, when you got the exception, what the density went to Knox.
So, Mark, what triggered putting these exceptions in? I mean, what drew your attention to it? What?
Because typically, PUDs are geared towards typically land that has some kind of physical constraints. And the idea is that you stay out of the constrained areas, but you get to develop a little more in the other areas. So this really wasn't clustering the development physically, but it was allowing for some additional perks to it. Ours is pretty limited for perks. I mean, ours is basically, you get your setbacks waived, and that's what you get. And there was no provision for a minimum amount of open space to be provided. And there was, there was no, there was no potential there to kind of provide an incentive for someone to do something unique on the property. And that's what PUDs are oftentimes oriented towards.
So this was a reaction to an existing issue?
Yeah. And it was just some stuff I found. I mean, I was poking around thinking, what are the avenues that jurisdictions are using to try and, you know, foster development? And then I think also the open space issue is, I mean, that was again, we're moving towards some areas potentially of development in the community where we've got some constraints like Ash Creek. And how do we work with that, and how do we provide open space? And how do we make sure that we get some open space that isn't just the bottom land floodplain that nobody can develop, and here's your open space? Right. And that some percentage of that be allowed to be active and played upon, and then they get some credit for areas that are more passive recreation. So, yeah, it was, that part was probably more in response to seeing what some available properties are that could be developed, and seeing that there's some constraints there with the creek particularly.
In the open space, and I just located on here, one of my notes or question marks was, you know, would a community garden fit into an active or passive recreational definition?
That would be an active.
That would be an active.
Yeah, passive is, is the area that you're looking at while you're sitting on the bench, but you're not walking over there and disturbing it. You know, that's more of a passive, so that would be active. Yeah.
It's mentioned under F, John. It talks about provision of community greenhouses, gardens, or orchards.
Under F, above?
F on page four.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it is specifically.
Yeah, sure. That's a use.
It's a use.
Particularly the density, but same concept.
Yeah.
And then the last one I had, as I was looking at the, I just need a refresher on this. On page five, the definition of the Main Street, disparate zone, we have one accepted property there, northwest corner of, on the intersection of, with Knox, that's Jackson and Knox. We've had some action on that previously. Is this now just becoming codified?
Yeah, that's when Mayor's been at breakfast in the Carriage House. That was rezoned several years ago, I'm just now getting around to it. And this is the only zone where we actually define an area of application. So this was one I just didn't get to before. This is more of a cleanup one.
I thought that's, yeah.
Anything else? Does it, I would go if I read by title?
I move the second reading and adoption of the ordinance number 1352, enacting legislative amendment 14-01, amending the zoning and development ordinance, transportation system plan, and sign.
Did that count as the second reading?
Yep, because I moved the second reading and adoption.
Good.
You're good.
Is there a second?
Sign.
Moved and seconded.
And seconded.
Seconded. Are there, is there any other discussion to go over? Hearing then, Phyllis?
Counselor Coons?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Milligan?
Aye.
Counselor Shaffer?
Aye.
And with that, we will adopt those legislative amendments. And that brings us to council comments tonight.
The Rural Tourism Studio had their bicycle tourism session today. I was only able to attend for about an hour, hour and a half.
And able to attend today.
Lot of energy in the room, and I think it'll just, obviously, there's a receptive audience, but there's a lot of folks that are interested, I think, in pushing cyclone tourism further. And so I presented on a panel and discussed the adoption of a scenic valley, scenic bike way for the western side of the valley, and then also talked about what I was calling the Pult County Tourism Loops. So a variety of loops centered around Monmouth Independence, Western, and branching out into Dallas, branching out into Amity, branching out into as far as Pointe de Vista, Corvallis, if we want to go. They could be five, they could be 10, they could be 50 miles, but it's an opportunity to showcase some of these things that we have that are so great, like the only bike shop in the county that you can rent a mountain bike and go to Black Rock with, or some of our great park work that we're doing. So I would say that after January of next year, that this is going to be due in March as the scenic route, but Independence is really moving on a campsite that they have for bikes. And so I would say that after January, I'm hoping that maybe we can get some council and city activity to support getting Monmouth in on this game as well.
Mark can help me a little bit, Marshall, too.
Thank you.
I have something, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to take this opportunity, as this will be my likely last scheduled meeting of this august body, as I yield.
We get you for a little while.
Well, legally, but I don't know that I get the camera, and you know how I like the camera. So I yield my seat to the estimable Mr. Johnson at probably the next televised meeting of this body. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank a few people, if I could. First of all, our former counselor, Mr. Meyer, who basically dared me to do this, to be the change that I wanted to see. So he challenged me to take this on, and I thank him for that. To Scott Lecour and Phyllis Pullman, who taught me the ropes, even though, or especially when I wanted to learn the hard way, so thank you for that. And to my former and current colleagues, and my current and former colleague, I just wanted to thank you. I'm really impressed by the quality of our discussion, our disagreement, how we do the work that we do for the people of Monmouth, and I'm very proud of that work that we do. So I wanted to thank all of you for that. And I wanted to thank the citizens who the last four and a little bit years have come forward to meet with us. It's nice to see a full house. We appreciate when people have issues, and especially people who bring us difficult questions or unpopular views that they state. I think that's really important, and I really, really appreciate that. And I would thank my family and friends and neighbors who put up with my rants and my gushing and my defensiveness, and especially the ones who babysit my dog when I go to work at 7:00 in the morning and come home at 8:30 or 9:00 or 9:30 or 10:30 or 11:00 at night. But I think the coolest part about this job, and I think we all probably feel this way, is getting to work with the volunteers who work for this city. So people who step up because of their passion, or because they want to see something changed, or just because they feel it's a civic duty to get involved and to be on a board or a commission or participate in a project. And especially my special favorite boards, I've been really privileged to spend a couple of years with the Senior Advisory Board, and to get to attend those meetings, and just be wowed by those people and how much they do for the city. And now, the time that I've spent with our library board, same thing. You know, people who just really give of themselves to our community, and it's just been a real honor to serve them and to serve everyone. And so I just want to say thank you. Love you.
Thank you. Cease, thank you for stepping in to take on this job. It's not an easy one, and sometimes, you know, people think we do good stuff, sometimes we get a target, but in general, you know, I feel like, yeah, we're doing good stuff. So thanks for helping out with that for five years, or whatever it's been. Appreciate that. So that brings the end of the regular set, work, regular session agenda, unless there's any other council comments. We do have an executive session tonight, so I will read the script for that, and then ask for an adjournment to work session. We have a two-item work session agenda tonight as well. So the executive session script reads, "The City Council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing performance evaluation of public officers and employees. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602I, Performance Evaluation of Public Officers and Employees," which allows the council to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff or other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. It's not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning to our executive session. And again, we have a work session that we will need to attend to first, so if I could have a motion to adjourn the meeting to work session, I would appreciate that. So move. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's take a five-minute break and meet in the back.